Please stand during the board's play.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Doctor Palmer, the consent agenda, sir.
All right.
Good evening, everybody. Present to the board for approval, items A, B, C, D, and E.
Item number three, Steve makes the motion, approve. Five oh, sir. Items for consideration, action by the board trustees personnel.
Jessica. All right, so first up we have Mrs. May and I recommending Amy Kling for the position of Mitchell Junior High School, grade eight math teacher, starting next year, which our first teacher day next year is August 1st. Doctor Grissom and I are recommending Amy Smith for the position of Hatfield Elementary Title One Aid. Doctor Grissom and I are also recommending Brienne McIntosh for the position of Hatfield Elementary Temporary Title One Aid. Mr. Pritchett and I are recommending granting three unpaid leave days to Andrew Walbeaser for the dance competition she attended with her daughter. And Mr. Weitner, I'm going to turn the next recommendation over to you.
Okay. Recommendation that we have before us is varsity basketball boys coach. We are going to make the recommendation tonight for Jackson Ryan to be extended for five years. So a five-year contract extension. When I came in, the overall program, what we wanted to see was to build it from the program, from the ground up, and set our foundation at the youth level and then grow it from there. And he has done an amazing job, the role model of what we want to see for our overall programming, because he's had a hand in the youth, the junior high, all the way up through his high school program. So there is no doubt that that program is his, because his hand is in every involvement level of it. So like I've told all my coaches since I've came in, that is, that is the model of what we want our programs to look like. And I've told them if they make that model, then we will repay them with something. And Jackson's done an incredible job, so we are gonna offer him a five-year extension.
Before something, sorry guys, I'm kind of unorthodox in this. Coach Ryan, when I, I don't know if you remember this, last week I saw you at Burris Elementary School. I was speaking with Mrs. Gilbert in the hallway. That is not your building. What were you doing in that building during the school day? I'm assuming that was your prep, I hope that you.
Yes, that was my prep. That was my prep. Mrs. Gilbert had reached out and said that she had a student that was in need of, of a good male role model, spent some time with him. So we're in the beginning stages of spending some, some of my preps with him and we were in the gym shooting around, just getting to know him. Just to kind of, you know, give him and myself something to look forward to, so.
Well, as, as your superintendent, I just, I haven't had a chance to see you, I just want to say thank you for doing that. You don't have to do that, you could have easily said no. Most coaches would have had plenty to do where they found a reason to say they couldn't do that. And that was enough for me to see. That was more, to me, as your superintendent, that was more than the wins and losses, that was more than anything else. Is that you're building a program and I echo what Amy says, you are the face of this basketball program. And I'm very proud of that and I'm very appreciative that it's you that's the face of our program. So thank you.
Thank you.
For the kind, that, that showed everything of what kind of guy you are, of doing that with that kid. That told me more than any basketball game, anything from sidelines, was you taking time for a kid that really needed somebody that was in trouble. And you wanted to do that, so thank you, Coach, very, very much for that.
All right. Mr. Weitner and I are also recommending a one-year extension for Tim Hayworth, varsity basketball girls, Jeff Selby, varsity soccer, Matt Souters, varsity golf boys, Matt Souters, varsity golf girls, Levi Lottz, esports coach, and Isaac Brown, assistant esports coach. And then a couple of transfers to inform the board of, Melissa Passmore has transferred, transferred from being a Hatfield Title One Aid to the Mitchell Junior High School Administrative Assistant. And next year Andrea Hudson McIntosh will be transferring from grade six ELA to grade six science.
Steve makes the motion, approve. Patrick seconds, all in favor, five oh. Again, Jackson, I echo what Mr. Palmer says, really appreciate the job you're doing. Well, Dave, you're in the hot seat now. Would you like to introduce, because we're more interested in who you brought with you than, than you.
Carly was just telling me when everyone was looking over here that she was just eating it up, so.
Yes.
This is my wife Carly and this is our daughter Ruby, who will be. She'll be one in 10 days.
Awesome, awesome. So are, are you good? We got him for five years now. Are you good with, let this happen to your husband?
Yes, of course. We're, we're happy that he's posted home from where we're from, so.
Yeah, we're, we're thrilled. Congratulations.
Thank you. Appreciate you guys, thank you.
Item B. Item B, before I get to item B, there was one thing I was remiss, I think we need to definitely point out a couple of the, of the retirements that were in front of the, the board this evening. Gloria Schlemmer is retiring at the end of this school year and I think special thank you to her non-service to kids for a long time, teaching art, but also she represented the MBEA with a tremendous amount of passion and dedication to the teachers in this district. And say what you want about Gloria, but you can never say she didn't stand up for the teachers in this district and I, I can personally attest to that. And I also think it's important to point out that Linda Nevis is also retiring. She's been a tremendous asset to this district for a long, long time.
Both over 30 years.
Yeah, both over 30 years to the district, so I apologize for missing that, I wanted to make sure.
Glad you pointed that out.
All right. Item B, recommendation to employ the following personnel, those were included in your packets of the list of Hatfield Elementary certified staff, Burris Elementary certified, junior high certified, and high school certified staff. Item C, recommendation to approve the board policy revisions to the policies. And there's a lot of, unless our school attorney says, I need to list them all out verbally. Thank you, Mr. Pittman. This also would be your second reading, they sent to you a month ago and we had our first reading at the last month's board meeting. So this would be for your approval to enact those, those revisions to the policies.
Cindy makes the motion, approve. Patrick seconds, all in favor. Five oh, sir.
All right. Recommendation to approve maintenance staff evaluation forums, which were also included in your packets and those were a collaboration between our director of maintenance, assistant director of maintenance, and Ms. Jones.
Makes motion, approve. Steve seconds, all in favor.
All right. For a sketch, I just wanted to, to compliment all of our winter sports and winter extracurriculars, including the different athletic programs. With Coach Ryan's here to kind of represent boys' basketball program, but I think we got a lot to be proud of with all the different sports this season. Also the dance team, I think we've all seen through a lot of social media and everything else. Dance team made the community very proud once again by winning state championships once again. And also since he's here, I think over the weekend we had some reads to celebrate our music programs as well.
Yeah.
So congratulations to our band, and correct me if I'm getting this wrong, Mr. Pitts, but our band received gold?
Yes, the high school band received a gold at Group Three ISMA Organizational Festival. And then the junior high band was able to achieve a bronze rating at Group Three ISMA Organizational. And then on behalf of Mr. Riley, both his groups were able to receive silver ratings at both junior high and high school as well.
Great, well congratulations. Please convey that to Mr. Riley as well. So we're very proud of that and great work and I think I can speak safely for the whole board. We, there's been lots of discussions since your last presentation, last month. So I know the board is, is very committed to doing what we can, what we can, what they can do to help support the program that you're trying to build too. So stay tuned on that, okay? Don't, don't lose faith. B, Mr. Shaw, I just wanted to update you and the board on the Cognos bylaws, bylaws, those are in preparation. Michelle Cooper, who's the attorney for Show School Corporation, is sending, is in development of making a mock set of bylaws. I will be sending those to you to give appraisal of as well, as soon as I get those as well. Item C, kind of an exciting one, the Iditarod Teacher on the Trail. Mrs. Maggie Hamilton, one of our Burris Elementary teachers, has applied to be one of the few selected for the Iditarod Teacher on the Trail. If she does receive that honor, she will be on the trail of the Iditarod for, for some time. So there wouldn't be, it won't be a long, Jess, you ran on that meeting too, I don't think it'll be a, if she would get that accomplishment, she wouldn't be looking for any kind of long sabbatical, but there would be a few days here and there she would be requesting it often. And it's quite the, I don't know much, I'm learning about that Iditarod, but I guess this is a big deal in Iditarod world, being an Iditarod teacher on the trail. So Maggie's extremely excited and it'd be a nice feather in Mitchell's cap if one of Mitchell's, if Mitchell's on, was on that trail, so. The Iditarod is. It's an Alaskan dog race. To where I think.
From Anchorage to.
But it was started, the type, right, it all started history lesson, it was started because of, was it the typhoid outbreak and they had to get the medicines from.
Watch the movie Balto. And you'll learn all you need to know.
Ms. Ray, can you just pull up Balto on your computer real quick? But anyway, she'll be going to Alaska.
It's a very good movie.
At different points of the race. Yeah, she will not be.
Okay, that's what I wanted.
Herding the dogs or whatever they do, I don't know. Next, any other questions about the Iditarod?
No, I just didn't know what she's gonna do there.
But next one, I just, I just wanted to compliment, I think this is kind of fitting going into our, our major presentation this evening, getting to hear from Dr. Grissom and staff and the work they're doing at Hatfield. But I'm gonna read to you an email from, the Dr. Dykes reported, reported from one of our teachers. And I'm gonna leave specific student names out here, but I think it's a testimony, I'll read it to Dr. Grissom, I don't know if you've even seen this yet.
I have no idea.
To you, what you're doing and what we're getting ready here tonight. But says, this is from Molly Phillips. It says, "Good morning, wanted to give you both an update on our trial runs with Wynn, which is what I need." Kind of a enhanced remediation, I don't even know if it's, we can call it remediation anymore. But she said, "Student A has been doing so great at Wynn time. He listens to directions and is respectful of others in the group. He has better behaved than some of the other group members. We also tried with student B and student C. Student B was the only second grader that was still there and not in therapy. It was a success!" exclamation point. "I'm going to talk to Jan Dalton about what group on Monday and Friday student D can go with. With this therapy, he is unable to go with the Tuesday group. I'm also planning on trying to get P set up for some of my kiddos. I've been so impressed with how well they have done being pushed out into the bigger classes. That is a huge win."
That was the library, kids came to the library, I don't know, they're from Wynn, aren't they?
Yes, they actually are.
But I know what she's talking about there at the end is them coming to the library.
Well, she also said, "Jan Dalton is the greatest." Yeah, all joking aside, I want to share that with the board, because I think that sets us up really well. And Kim, if you want to go ahead and start getting ready and get set up, Joe and I, could you do me a favor, since you're in the front row, see that big orange button? Because either your Coach Ryan was gonna get that one. Because if it wasn't me, he was gonna make me try to jump up to the middle and just to.
If I wasn't known by that, I would have said, "I can't."
No, I wanted the board and I knew Dr. Grissom and Kim were gonna be here tonight, I think that's a testimony to what we're doing. And then just while Kim's getting set up for the Hatfield presentation, Capitol Projects update. This weather's kind of killed us here, last few days. Everything's going well, we've still got some things to work out, especially with concession stand, that, that we'll get those going. I know that I'll get with all of you either tonight or tomorrow morning to finalize sometimes maybe an upcoming session next week for a work session. I'll get with my schedule on that for, with Mr. Ray. Okay, unless any of you guys have anything, I'm getting ready to turn it over to Mrs. Ray, Dr. Ray. Congratulations, Dr. Ray and Dr. Grissom. And if the audience, if you guys want to shift your seats around, that's more than a problem.
Let's see how it looks. I'm gonna stand right here and block his camera.
All right. Most of the time, so that's gonna be all. So let Mrs. Ray get it. Dr. Ray, sorry. Technology's great when it works.
Well, and just so, the three guys in the front row need to know, I, I asked Dr. Grissom to come and give a talk. I've been sharing a lot of really exciting news with the board over some really unique and some special things that we're doing at Hatfield Elementary in regards to literacy. And in fact, I think it's very, very safe to say that no one else is doing what these guys are doing, not just in our area, but I mean anywhere. Are doing what these guys are doing, we're starting to see the definite results with that too.
All right, I'm gonna wander back and forth, because that's what I do naturally. But first of all, thank you for the opportunity to come and present this to you. I think this is a very unique program of what we have going on over at Hatfield School. I could sit and talk about a lot of things at Hatfield, I'm gonna spend specifically tonight talking about two. One is the KQ2 continual and Wynn time, because they do go hand in hand together. We could talk about all the things the teachers have done in the two and a half years since I've been there and things they've undergone. You know, they've talked about they've undergone a change of administration in the middle of the school year, right before pandemic. You know, I think people would say the pandemic created a lot of things, we had to adapt to e-learning, which that was a, a huge shift. We shifted the culture. But more than anything, they're working through the crisis of the pandemic while changing everything. So before we get started here, I want to define, when I say crisis, what I'm actually talking about. Webster's dictionary defines crisis as an unstable or crucial time or state of affairs in which a decisive change is impending. Crisis, well, the state of education in the nation has been in crisis for years. What we have here is a, very simply, it's a picture of literacy in America. Sixty-seven percent of our students do not read at grade level, or they just simply can't read at all. That means a third, basically a third, are reading at grade level or above grade level. As an administrator and as an educator of over 20 years, I'd say it publicly, that's kind of embarrassing to me. Because I'm involved with this, if that's not a crisis, I'm not really sure what is. What's this lead us to? Well, it leads us to higher poverty, higher crime, higher drug use, incarceration rates. It leads us to dead-end jobs, and quite frankly, it leads us to no success. That's not what I'm after as an educator. My goal was in 2002, when I started teaching, was to make every single student who came into my classroom at that time period a better, more rounded person. And this scares me to death when I actually learned this not too long ago. In Mitchell, literacy rates for years have been low. Mitchell's been going through a, a crisis of its own. We've struggled to learn to read. This occurs at all schools and MCAs, not Hatfield just alone. Burris struggles with it, junior high struggles with it, high school struggles with it, we all do. It's not their own fault, it's not something that's, you know, a problem to Mitchell. But we all do struggle with it. Hatfield has the foundational and the most important skills. Let me say that again, the foundational and most important skills to teach. If kids leave second grade and they can't read, what do you think they're gonna be like when they get to high school? High school's graduation rate sits at 80%, I think, and it fluctuates. What if we had 100% of those kids reading at grade level? Where would we be then? Something to think about. I'm gonna do an analogy as we go through tonight. I'm gonna compare things we're doing at Hatfield Schools, one of my favorite things to talk about, that's spaceflight. That's cool. Let's think about what a crisis might actually look like if we saw one in real life. All right. Now you probably sit there thinking, how in the world does spaceflight really have anything to do with Hatfield Elementary School? Well, we could think about Apollo 13 specifically here. When that explosion happened, they were living in the command module, which was supported life for three people. They were forced by that explosion to go into the lunar module, which was designed for two people. Well, there's crisis one, how do you make three people survive in an environment that's only supposed to be for two? That's what they had to do. Well, when they did that, carbon dioxide started building up, because they hadn't factored in that third person. Well, then they say, okay, well, let's just switch out the cartridges, you know, get those scrubbers working right. Well, now we find out the command module has circular cartridges and filters, while the lunar module has square. How do you make a round peg fit into a square hole? Guys, I'm gonna stand here and tell you that every single day, it doesn't matter where you're at, what school you're in, every single teacher is asked to do that every single day, is put a round peg fit into a square hole. Why? Because for some reason, education hasn't changed, it's been the same. You know, around the world, students who go to school, they are pre-selected to go into the upper levels of education. We offer it to everybody. We're expecting every single child, no matter where they're reading this level, no matter what socioeconomic, what their family background is, how much money they have, if their primal needs are being met or not, we're asking them to come into a classroom and survive. That's rough. Okay? Then you throw on top of that, you throw the special needs, raised one of my own. Okay, I can talk about that, because I've got one. And ask them to survive in a regular classroom and ask the teachers to teach those kids like they do everybody else. Well, kids are like popcorn. They all, all the kernels look the same when they're bagged, but you put, apply the same heat to that bag, then they're all gonna pop at different times. Kids are the same way, they're gonna pop when they're ready to pop. And they're popping at different times, but ever, the state expects us to make that round peg fit into a square hole. So at Hatfield, what we've done is we've kind of shaken up the mag a little bit. Dissipated the heat where it needs to be dissipated. And we've asked them to come to meetings, not knowing what they're coming really to meetings for, except for we're gonna change how we do business. We're gonna take the curriculum and we're gonna change it. We're gonna take how we do business, and we're gonna change all of that up. And that comes, here's how we fix the problem, is Wynn time and the continual. Now, I'm gonna step back here and point to a couple of things, and I will show the slide a little bit later. This is an actual screenshot from the continual. This is gonna be kindergarten, I'm gonna reference kindergarten a lot, because that's where it's rolled at, at, right now. We are rolling this out in first and second grade on April the 28th. And that's gonna play a role here in a little bit as well, go ahead to the next slide, Kim. What is Wynn time designed to do? Very simply, give students the assistance they need and the skill they need the assistance in when they need it. It is laser focused. So they're giving the assistance they need and skills they need most help in. Once they master this skill, then they go on to the next levels. Let me explain to you how this actually has gone out. Next slide. Teachers have been doing this for over a year now. Over a year, they've been working on this, it's not perfect, it probably never will be. We're gonna be tweaking this, because this hasn't been done before. Teachers were asked to come up with the, in kindergarten, they developed 20 skills. I said, "Give me the skills they need to be successful in school." You guys have over 100 years of experience teaching amongst you. I know what the state standards say. What do you say they need to know? Because who's the experts? You know, lawmakers or the teachers? I would trust my teachers, that's like asking me to go to do brain surgery. If I have to do brain surgery, it ain't gonna go very well, I promise. State legislators doing this for teachers ain't gonna go very well. So they came up with those 20 important skills that they needed. From there, they leveled it out and said, okay, where are our students at currently? So every green box you see marked up here is where that child has mastered that skill. The white is the gaps. When we got this laid out for the first time, we talked earlier about how COVID was a pandemic, how it was a crisis. Guys, I can tell you right now, the effects of COVID, Patrick, you can tell them the effects of COVID, you see it in hospitals every day. This is the effects of COVID. Our students were way behind. So our, once our teachers got those students listed in the skill sets that they had mastered and what they hadn't, well, then we divided them up into group segments. Well, we ended up with 17 groups, I had to come up with 17 people to make this thing work. We came up with 17 people to make it work in kindergarten. Seventeen adults, even my librarian, has taken jobs to fix this problem for Mitchell Community Schools. I cannot begin to say enough about the steps these support staff members have taken. Every single A in kindergarten classes have a group. Every single teacher in kindergarten has a group. My librarian has a group. Title One has a group, that's three teachers. Title One Aids have a group. That's impressive. And they spend 30 minutes a day, laser focused on these students' missing areas of education. Laser focused. Does this work? Well, go ahead to the next slide, I kind of went through all of that, Kim. Does it work? Yes, it does work. Ninety-four percent of our kindergarten class has seen some kind of improvement, and we've been doing this about a month and a half. Forty percent, forty percent of our students have seen growth of two skill sets or more in that short time period. As a matter of fact, we're doing an experiment right now with one student who was really low. And he's getting an additional 30 minutes on top of it, intensified in one-on-one time. All right, we call it the Melvin Theory, it's an Alfredo video movie that I watched a long time ago. But he has shown last week, two skill sets of advancement in one week time period. That's phenomenal. The goal is to get these kids caught up as rapidly as we can, knowing that they have mastered it, and there are master check-offs. The data shows, we had to have some type of a check-off sheet. What's mastering, that's determined by the teaching staff. And typically, that's about, they have to do it four out of five times on two separate sessions. So students can do the activity four out of five times on two separate occasions, classified as mastery, that's the only time they get that check-off sheet. So they're seeing this kind of improvement while giving 14% of our students the enrichment opportunities. So not only are we reaching these kids down here and moving them up, we got these kids here getting what they need as well, and we're pushing them higher. Some of our kindergartners are working on first grade continual right now, preparing them for next year already. Closing the gap, making it more equitable is what we're after. Equity is one of the key strategies and one of the rocks of Mitchell Community Schools and Hatfield, and that's what we're working to move. So does it work? Yes, evidence, proof's in the pudding. What teachers are saying about Wynn time, and you guys could kind of squint and read through that, should have blown them up more, but there was too many quotes and I left some out. But I'm gonna read just a couple of these to you, because it kind of speaks for itself. One is conversations surrounding Wynn time instruction are leading to each teacher refining their skills and learning best practices for each skill set. I'll touch on that in a second. Another one says, "Wynn time provides me for an assurance that, knowing that all of my students have reading needs that are." Another one says, wind time provides me for an assurance that, knowing that all of my students have reading needs that are being met. All of my students that have reading needs, those needs are being met. Guys, that's education at its finest. The fact that teachers are refining their own skills, making themselves better, that's a win-win. When you have teachers making themselves better, research shows us a number one indicator of true student success is the, is the quality of teacher standing in front of it. And when you got professionals making themselves better by figuring out, oh, I wasn't doing that right. That's a win all the way around. Everybody's getting what they need, children and the adults. Three closing points I want you to ponder. One is twelve amps of power. Apollo thirteen had twelve amps of power in order to get back to Earth. Twelve amps of power, that's not even enough to operate a coffee machine, let alone a vacuum. Not enough. Twelve amps of power made the difference between life and death. Wind time is Hatfield's twelve amps of power. That twelve amps of power is giving students what they need in order to be successful. It doesn't get much more powerful than that. That's proof's in the pudding, you know? Two, future starts here. It is the motto at Hatfield, it is the mission at Hatfield, it is what we do. We teach those foundational skills to ensure that every single student that enters the hallowed halls of Hatfield leave with a strong education to build on. I can build a house with concrete footers. Try to do that with sand, it shifts all the time, it ain't gonna be very good. Okay, we're giving them those concrete footers they need. And number three, serious commitment. The staff at Hatfield have that serious commitment right now. They have it. They have changed and shaken their world and turned it upside down from everything they've known for the last twenty-plus years, Ms. Dr. Ray can attest to that. She's been there, how many years has she been at Hatfield?
Twenty-two.
Hmm, okay, this is what puts you at twenty. Twenty-two years, she can attest to the change and the improvement that's going on there. A lot of those seasoned teachers can do that. Okay? Serious commitment is what is taken from the staff members that actually showed up, and thank you guys for showing up tonight, I appreciate the support there. But we've gotta have it all the way down, top down, and you guys have given us that thus far. Dr. Comer and Ms. Jones has given us that, and we appreciate that so much. But I think there's one person I think that says this, wraps this up better than I can, so I'm gonna turn this back over here real quick, let this gentleman speak.
On Apollo thirteen, our team abused the, like, items we had on board to solve a major problem, to create the thing that cleansed the air of COVID oxide. Failure was not an option. We had never lost a person in space. And today, failure is not an option for schools to assure that the children have the joy and the blessing of literacy.
Failure is not an option for schools to ensure that children have the joys and the blessings of literacy. When I got to Hatfield, I was asked to change the direction of Hatfield schools. Wind time has changed the direction of Hatfield. The continuum has changed the direction of Hatfield. That's what we're after, putting wind in the sails, giving our, giving our students, you have grandkids that go to Hatfield. You have one, and you're gonna have two next year.
He'll change your school.
Coming to Hatfield.
The cycle.
I mean, this is, this is very important. So we thank you for your support, and I'm gonna ask if you guys have any questions for me, because I will answer whatever you guys have got.
I think it's great, I mean, you just said that I've got one there now. He reads to his little brother every night, it sparked about two months ago during his bath.
The best thing they can do is read each other.
Something sparked at school that's got him on that.
Literacy's our big push, and we're giving everything a look, but literacy's our big one. What questions do you guys have, I mean, about Hatfield, what can I answer?
So what actually is the program, thirty minutes?
It's thirty minutes a day, four days a week right now, thirty minutes a day, so they're getting two hours worth of extra help right now. Uh, that is hopefully going to be spread out over five days in the future. Right now, it's in the trial period, we're trying to get everything set up so that it works properly, you know, but everything has been kinda coming together. Teachers are having tough conversations, and I think that's one of the most impressive things for me, is when they're actually having that meat and potatoes conversation of what, what does mastery really look like? You know, what is it, what does that mean? And then they get out of this wishy-washy stuff of, well, they almost got it, they only, it's close. And the question very simply comes up for me is, it's either yes or no, do they have it or do they don't? It's yes or no, they got it or they don't got it. And then they'll go, no, they don't. So then they give them what they need to make them so they do have that mastery. I can't send them one if they don't have, if they don't have mastery of it, and that's what it's about.
So how do they get woke up, I mean, like, like just classroom, you take them and put them in sections of the classroom?
We got, we open up every single classroom, every teacher's involved, every classroom's involved, and every spare space that I can find. Hallway, conference room, again, library, steam room, art room if we've needed it, uh, you know, the data room if they needed it. RTI, or the, uh, downstairs, the, uh, uh, titled classes, they're busy down there. Any open space we've got, where we can send kids to, to get this thirty minutes of laser-focused instruction, that's where they go.
What are you using for your indicator to decide, or your deciding factor on what skills they need? Do you have an assessment, are you using classroom, success, failure, what?
Well, every teacher designed a mastery checkoff sheet, okay? This is the, that what you saw, go back to this slide, three, four? There. That is the-
Teachers decided what?
Okay, they decided what mastery looked like, and they've decided, they've got an assessment. Because how that's really gonna work is when they go through wind time, they're always doing informal assessments. Cheek, 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 you're always, you're a teacher, you always observe your students, you know where your student's at. If you know his child has mastered a skill, okay, and you're convinced they've mastered it from what you've observed, they then grab this checkoff sheet, this mastery list, this assessment, and go, okay, do this for me real quick. And that student does that, I've observed you doing it, there's one, and now I've got a formal check on it, there's twice. Check, you're going to the next group.
So what are the, the twenty skills that we collect?
Oh my, I don't know them off the top of my head. One through eight, I can tell you, again, kindergarten foundational, is letters and letter sounds. Right now, see, I think we started off with, about a month and a half ago, believe it or not, we had about twenty-two kids who did not know the letters and sounds. Twenty-two, in a month and a half we're down to four.
So you put them into a group where that's what they-
That's all they focus on, is letters and sounds, letters and sounds, letters and sounds. And we have all of those eight skills worked together. Because like I said, now there are only four, and, uh, three out of those four have already been diagnosed with a learning delay. And there's the fourth one, I do think, has a delay as well.
And how do you focus on them?
We keep giving them, mastery's mastery across the board. You know, you gotta draw that line and say, this is, this is what, you know, to get the check, this is what you gotta get. And it's holding every student accountable to the same standard. Because I said it this way, but, you know, it was with my own son. You gotta hold them accountable to the same standard because that's what the world's gonna do. World's gonna hold them back. And, uh, you know, they have, they have problems, they have their own thing, but the world doesn't care about that problem. They wanna know they're able to do it just like everybody else does. So we're pushing them as hard as we can, understanding they're gonna need those times for breaks. They're gonna have to go have that decompression time, so to speak. We give them all of that, but mastery's mastery, and they still got that opinion.
So four on kindergarten class, and this is the largest kindergarten class we've had in years.
Had in years. And funny you mention that, we're gonna have kindergarten roundup tomorrow. And we've had to open, we've had to open up two days of kindergarten roundup. Because the first, I think it was first fifty slots for taking up like that. So we're sitting, I think, about eighty, eighty-five right now, and that's not saying the addition of twenty, or thirty, or forty you're gonna get, and then all the moveage you're getting. Because right now, we know the people aren't content with what's happening north of the river. We know there's people not happening, not happy with, uh, the independent school system, so we're picking up a lot of kids. Uh, we just enrolled, I think, one or two today, you know, and a couple, when I was out last week, we enrolled a couple as well. So people are, you know, they're catching on what's, what we're doing, and, you know, we have to do a better job at publicizing what it is that we do at Hatfield. And I, you know, told the teachers today at school, I said, if somebody can help me out and figure out how to actually publicize this massive beast, I'd be more willing to, to listen to that because there's, you know, take videos, take pictures, so we're starting to do all that kinda stuff as well.
Is there anything you can ask the board that, that we can provide to accelerate this, um, or?
Well, as always, we know-
Before you answer that, wait a second. Take a breath. All right. Hey, Kim, give, update, he's gonna answer your question. Kim, let's, give us an update on, Steve's done a terrific job talking about how great kindergarten's had, and all the work they've done. I know your first and second grade colleagues have been working their tails off too. Okay? Kim, can you, can you give just a very brief, I'm putting you on the spot, and I, I don't apologize, but, okay? Can you give just a quick description of what, what our first and second grade colleagues have been doing as well? Because I know they've been working equally as hard as the kindergarten has also.
One of the first steps that we had to do was kinda narrow the subskills down to, like, those power standards, those skills that we just felt like they really needed to have. And so we've worked extensively just focusing on those, building up lessons, building those assessments and things like that. And so what we were doing right now is taking those and putting kids where they fall, you know, based on, the assessments based on teacher observations. And then looking at those skills, you asked about all the different skills, some of it comes from the standards, some of it from the curriculum, some of it from the teacher, you know, expertise. And we kinda grouped them based on that, and it's all the skills that they would need, K through two. It's really neat to see that kindergarten flows right into first grade, flows right into second grade. And so right now, we're just getting ready to break them up and do the same thing with first and second.
Yeah, thank you, well said, Kim, thank you, and I, and I, I wanna specifically ask Kim that because I know as an instructional coach, she's been working a lot with, with all the grade level teachers there. But it's, it's hard work, and as Dr. Grissom pointed out, and as, as Dr. Ray pointed out, we decided to use the experts that we have in the classrooms with our kids. No one knows our kids better than our teachers who literally live with them, right, for, for a lot of months out of the year. So instead of, of having a textbook tell us, or instead of having someone else tell us, and the teachers, a lot of credit goes to them, they put in the work. They, they, they chose what skills they feel are needed for our kids at Mitchell. And one thing too, to go back on Dr. Grissom's comment, I think the growth in numbers, more than anything else, it's a testimony to what we're doing. It's not our concern what others are or are not doing, our concern is what we're doing. And if we concentrate on us putting excellence out and us putting great, we don't have to worry about everybody else. And I, I want every school district, because they've got kids too, they're great kids too, right? I think it's a testimony to the work the teachers at Hatfield have been doing, and the process and the programming that we're doing, which is fully literacy. And then before you answer Mr. Burton's question, I'm, I know we've got Andrea's spent a lot of time at the high school, and we've got Howard's here, she's secondary, Mr. Tibbs is secondary, Jackson's secondary teachers. Think for a second, then you guys can just, any of you can answer. If we send you students at the junior high high school level, and all of them read at or above grade level, how does your lives look different as teachers, and how do those schools look if every one of those kids are coming to you at or above grade level? Because that is the ultimate goal, that all kids, and Dr. Grissom said it well, those aren't, those, he left out the names for obvious reasons. Those are special needs kids there too, those are kids with major struggles and hurdles also. They're not on a separate list, you'll notice, they're mixed in with, we have the same standards and expectations, because we care the same, not all the kids have the same expectations for all, right? But you secondary folks who've spent a lot of your lives in secondary work, how does your lives and how do your schools look different if every kid comes to you at or above grade level?
I don't have to spend a quarter of the year going on basic skills. I don't have to teach my seventh graders how to add and subtract and multiply and divide and how to read a word problem, or put it into readable English so they can try to read it. I can spend that time on actually seventh grade standards and preparing them for eighth grade.
Does it change your music department?
Oh, certainly, between me, I mean, my side isn't very word-based, but we have those, the, the core books that we use, and of course, there's different things in there that they have to read, but reading music is the same concept you read left to right. Uh, and then you have the horizontal and vertical ways of reading it, and then you go to the choral side, and that would help tremendously. Mr. Riley wouldn't have to explain, oh, this is how you pronounce this word, this is how you say this word. Because students will be able to look the word and actually read it, because I, I know, talking with them firsthand, he's had to do that at times. So it, it tremendously affects even, even the music classrooms.
Patriots scheduling look a lot different if all kids are coming?
Absolutely, but I think you'll see, uh, uh, attendance improve. I think you'll see emotional and physical well-being approve, improve, because you won't have kids that are pretending to be sick because they don't wanna go to school where they feel like they're failing. And, um, they'll have some self-confidence and, and feel like they have a place where they belong.
Famous coach, how does, not only your classroom, but how's athletics look differently?
Yeah, I, I think, I mean, you kinda hit on it, if a student's continually failing, um, I mean, you give them these tools and, and that just puts them ahead of the game. Whether it's basketball, it's, you know, great English, it just puts them ahead of the game and gives them that confidence that, you know, somewhere along the line, they're not gonna give up, they're not gonna drop out, they're not gonna quit, they're not gonna do these things, they've got the tools to, to be successful in everything, this, this feeds into everything, so.
Can I piggyback on that real quick, because that's something else, I did, I did leave that out unintentionally. But that's the one thing that we have seen in, in the kindergarten classrooms, is students getting that motivation to succeed. As a coach of twenty years, succeed, we know, success breeds success, just does. Steel sharpens steel. When those kids are seeing them, themselves moving up on that continuum, I know, uh, one of our teachers has a board set up where the kids actually have them in their groups, and they take their name and they move it to the next group. That's powerful for kindergarten, because instead of hearing all the time, you're too stupid, you're too dumb, you can't do anything, yes, I can. And that makes them work harder, and it gets them better behaviors. Now, you're always gonna have a couple who are here and there, but we're seeing an improvement in the behaviors, and that initiative, that motivation, that, that internal motivation where true success comes from with education. You know, I always told students, I can be the best teacher with the best lesson, the most engaging stuff, and until you care about what it is we're doing, it's not gonna matter. That's internal. You have the best plays, have the best drills, but until they want to work hard and develop that, it's not gonna matter. You know, you're spinning your wheels, it's no different. So I'm proud of my staff at Hatfield, I could not be more proud of, especially my second, he's my second grade teacher that's here. These guys, they've been through the wringer. You know, last year, we changed up the way they did reading, and I'm gonna answer your question with all this stuff here, it's gonna work, Kim. We've changed from, you know, Scott Forsman and Reading Streets and all that kinda stuff over to readable English, it started doing stuff the way we know it's going to work. Doing what we know works, because it's the best way to do business. I can do what you tell me to do, but it's not gonna work. He knows what's gonna work best in his classroom because he's there every day. Okay? Then all of a sudden, we gotta teach these glyphs, and now all of a sudden, we gotta redo our, our lessons, we gotta build more lessons, we gotta spend more time doing this. It's frustrating, the stress, the stress level's up here, support for these guys is critical. It's critical, but the changes this team has made, and the first grade team, I mean, the tips the kindergarten teachers have made, has allowed us to have thirty-eight students pass the I read three test in second grade. Okay? Kim, can you go back to slide number two? I wanna show you something, I didn't notice this until today. Keep going, one more, there you go. Thirty-eight students is a third of our students in second grade. That's your grouping. That's your group in the grade. Okay? There's coming a time that takes the serious consideration, that serious commitment, to really sit back and look at student numbers. Because there may be a time I have to ask for staff. You know, I know what I could, what I can use for next year. You know, with the kindergarten numbers right now, as they stand currently today, that's gonna go to first grade next year. That's gonna put our class sizes at about twenty-eight kids. Did the math today. There's a high probability we're looking at about twenty-five kids again, then next year's kindergarten class could be more. Now, I could use some additional support staff, you know, like Ms. Dalton. A junior high never understood the true value of support staff. These guys right here are the backbone of your school building. Right there. Okay? They are the backbone. They're the ones filling in when we don't have subs. I can't take certain people and apply them to wind time because they have to go fill in classrooms. I have three people right now that are guaranteed, almost every single day they come in, they're not gonna do the job that I hired them to do, because we don't have subs, and I gotta have people in the classrooms. Does that stop wind time? Nope. Guess what those staff members do? They pick up that tablet of stuff, and guess what? They run with wind time. That's just how they operate. They bend over backwards right here. I could use about four more of her. What do those people do after the fact of wind time? Well, we've talked about their group instruction in class, we've talked about wind time, we've talked about title one time, how about let's give them one more of what they need, a more laser-focused, about thirty minutes of one-on-one time? Those individuals can be used in a lot of places. Okay? We just had a teacher retire, who's at top of her pay scale. Okay? There's money to be had there. I could take, I could get a teacher right there, an additional four staff, four staff member.
So you're saying staff?
Yeah, absolutely. I am, I'm saying staffing, Dr. Comer, I am, I got you. Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of things there, you know, but support is a big one. The support's critical. And I thank you for all you've done for us and what you're gonna do for the future, because without things you guys have done, the support you've given us with ladies, people like Tammy back here, she's been phenomenal help for us. It's great.
Steve, I appreciate your passion and your commitment to this, it's obvious.
Yeah, I could shut up, I need to shut up, because I could talk all night on this.
Thank you.
And we all got dinner to eat too.
I think too, Steve, Steve mentioned, we'd be all remiss if we didn't recognize Tammy Miller and her help. She's worked very hard with Steve and Kim and the entire staff, and on behalf of the district, thank you, Tammy, very much, and I know you and I can just communicate a lot, you know, to put you on the spot so you don't feel left out either. If this district, when we achieve our goal of every kid at or above grade level, first of all, you work all over the country, is there any district that's focused on that? Of every kid?
No, there's not one district that I've, that I know about, that I've worked with or know about that is focused on all kids reading at grade level. Not one. And that, it's a game changer, it's like your secondary teachers just said, I mean, everything will be real-world application if they come prepared to the next level. And, and they will, it's already starting to happen, the wheels are in motion.
Absolutely. Do you have a question for you guys? Dr. Grissom, Kim, thank you very, very much.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Does anybody have anything else?
I just wanted to say real quick, I wasn't able to be here at the last meeting with Mr. Tibbs because Annalee and I were very sick with Stucklue, so we couldn't be here. But I am the color guard slash winter guard coach that works with the band. We did kind of a practice run of a winter guard this spring, we performed it at the dance team showcase, and we did a show dedicated to a former student of ours, and it really was wonderful for our team, I think for the family and the community. We had twenty-seven on our winter guard, which is a huge number, especially for a school corporation of this size. I didn't have that many, and I came up from a high school of three thousand or more. So that, that is huge interest. I have already put out a Google form interest for color guard auditions, the color guard will be with the marching band in the fall, and I already have almost thirty signed up, so we're gonna have more than that show up. We've been invited to the University of Louisville on May twenty-eighth to do a color guard clinic with their college color guard. It's free to our students, so it's gonna be great for them. So just to reiterate, we have the student passion for marching band, for color guard, the passion from students is there. I have students that were in winter guard that have never done an extracurricular in their lives, ever. Student, she couldn't be here tonight, she wanted to, a student that I had when I first started at the junior high, and when I first started at the junior high, we kinda butted heads a little bit, but when she realized that I just cared about her, we became really close, and winter guard was her first extracurricular ever, made her do better on her grades this semester because she wanted to perform, so she did better in school. Color guard and winter guard is really a place where kids that don't fit into any other extracurricular can fit in there. And we all know how phenomenal our dance team is. There are a lot of our kids that are really great at dance and performing arts that either don't audition because they don't think they're good enough, or just aren't that caliber because our dancers are so great, then they have color guard and winter guard to go to. And I have dancers wanting to be in color guard. So that just shows, if we have some of our dance team members, imagine how phenomenal we'll be. Band has already showed how amazing they can be. Together, I don't, I think we're unstoppable. Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
What was your practice schedule and how do you plan on practicing?
So in, for winter guard, we, the only time that we could get gym, because winter guard has to have a gym, was Monday nights, we did six to eight PM at Hatfield, and on Thursdays, Saint Mary's Church was amazing to let us use their church gym for free from three-thirty to five-thirty. So that was our practice schedule. They had six weeks to put that performance together, and only one person had ever touched a flag before, one. And I, they did, they were ready for competition, I would have gladly and felt great about taking them to a competition if we, if we had been ready for that. In color guard, we will, I have auditions, May second and fifth, six to eight PM at Hatfield gym, and then we will do a couple practices after school just to get those basics before we go to the color guard clinic at Louisville. And then we will have a guard week over the summer, we're working out exactly when that week will be, where they will learn the show, all the choreography to the fall show, they'll go to band camp with the band, and then they will practice the same time that the band will. So they're a part of the band, essentially.
Thank you. Director McMoosh, is there? Steve second, it's all in favor? Well, we're adjourned, we've got a sign.
Yeah, lots of signs.